What is it through Dubai, the United States of America, interior republic, per which is sands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and the liberty and justice of the world.
One.
Morning.
We have a forum, so I'll call the meeting to order. I'll take a motion to approve the agenda elements.
I make a motion approval.
I will second it. Any further discussion? And none also prepared to say aye?
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carry. Rich.
Morning. Um, just kind of review, uh, we took paint books last, well, um, twenty eight, they were accepted, um, and, um, and Camline painting was the, the local, when we got two quotes in. Um, we did include, we talked to the city in Northwood, they have some their stuff, they'd like to get painted while you come in, so we kind of separated their numbers out. Well, then separate the numbers out with their quantities, they're aware that they'll have to make some payments, but the quotes came in at nineteen twenty five a gallon for paint. And we've got some stop bars and some railway crossing symbols and, and things like that, but the total quote between, we, we always bid it with Mitchell County, it's kind of a uh, thing, so their total quote was a hundred and eleven thousand seven oh six fifty, and then, like I said, a portion will be Northwood, someone will be actually San Hansker, and so I figure we're around mid fifty five thousand for our half. Cause the miles that we're painting are the same between Mitchell and Worth County, so not a bad, not a bad quote for us, just want to let you guys know that that was coming up.
You know, we just paint so many miles a year then, Rich.
Yeah, I think we've got right now, we've got sixty two miles, I had the guys go out and have them look at what's on the pavement to see if it's still good. Um, I think we're doing one oh five from county line to county line this year. Um, and whatever else we've got, we've got some stuff that needs touch up, but a lot of times you can look at it during the day and it looks okay, but at nighttime, sometimes it doesn't, and it depends on rain too, but the way the waterborne paint is. You know, I think we're gonna, I think we're even gonna try to refresh up the intersection, the casino there, because
That was wonderful.
But that's epoxy paint, so I'll see how the waterborne, at least that's, it's, it's been mailed in a little bit, so hopefully. That stuff seems to be really good yet, except we had the, the seal crews come in. You know, they kind of, when they sealed the cracks and stuff, they got overlapped on the paint, but whatever. Um, so that's that, um, I got an email last week that the contractor wants to have a pre-con this week or next week for Dogwood and the paving project down there. We haven't made contact with him yet, so we'll figure something out there this week. I did, I won't, uh, give any names out, but we had a request last week of up on Wheeler Wood to reduce the speed limits on the curves to fifteen miles per hour and put speed bumps in.
Really?
North of the.
North of the garden, okay.
Because there have been multiple dogs and cats hit. And almost getting their mail, and by, and people almost getting hit by getting their mail, so. I don't think we're gonna slow down, but I think the comment was made, people are using it like a highway, and that's exactly what it is.
Aren't they about, couple of those about forty, forty-five mile an hour curves anyway, or thirty?
They're take, and they're thirty-five and some.
They're pretty short.
They're sharp curves, if you take them very fast, you're going in a ditch.
So if you're not listening to those signs, they're not gonna listen to ones that are even.
No, and we're not gonna reduce it, I mean, we can, we could always reevaluate the speed, but I don't think fifteen miles an hour is, is the speed for those, they're, they've got advisory speeds plaques on them now, and this individual's been calling frequently on a lot of other things, so.
And they're arrowed and.
Yeah, but to say that cats and dogs are getting killed because people are speeding in to put speed bumps in, that's not gonna happen, so.
Yeah.
Keep your cats and dogs off the road and it'll be fine. So anyway, just wanted to bring that up, and then finally, like, uh, Jackie had mentioned earlier, this final pay for the S T P project that last year for Thrush Avenue. Uh, this is for the final voucher uh, to the D O T that the board needs to sign. Um, this payment will be for, uh, twenty nine thousand three forty-six. And then, um, the total project cost was will be one million eight hundred one thousand six forty-one, so. Um, if I can get that approved and we can get that turned into D O T and then our federal aid project can start getting closed out, get paid to the.
I will make a motion to approve that payment.
Come on, sorry, no. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all's there's aye?
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carry.
Who's the?
Well, stand in.
I have a new A J was gonna be done, and whose name do you think I'll trade on anything for today?
A J.
Just the one for Rich.
Yeah, just the one for that.
Sir, is there an auditor one on that one?
Uh, there isn't.
No, okay, good.
We never had.
Engineer and Mr. Smaby.
And mine will get signed when I put it in Doc Express, anyway, my angel. That's all I've got this morning, um, haven't really had a chance to catch up with anybody since my vacation, so. Probably have more to talk about next week, but we're getting, uh, I think, uh, Colton said he wanted to try to get our our Rockford quotes out late this week, so I'm kinda kind of a little bit behind on that, but we'll get it done.
For the time being, if we get a terrible windstorm, could Colton possibly help us pick up sticks?
On the lawn.
Or somebody.
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 Yeah.
I mean.
Put it in his head.
Okay.
Give him a heads up on it, is everybody okay with that?
Got a couple guys on the shop one day, you know, whatever.
Oh, has it?
Somebody.
Has it been a?
Well, we've had two in, probably since you've been gone.
Yeah, well, I was fishing in those winds.
Um, and then the generator?
Oh, yeah, um, Dan, you said?
It has a low coolant alarm on it, or not alarm, but light thing, light. I have called the company, but for other, and something like that, is there someone, you guys got?
Guys, no drop guys.
Cause this guy's coming from Wells is the one that's set up to do the generator.
Oh, has it always been that company checking out the?
No, it used to be Busher Brothers, but Busher Brothers went out of business a year ago on that end because they lost their tech and they can't hire any other techs.
I mean, not necessarily fix it, but just to give an opinion and a conceit.
They can probably bring. They can probably bring our guy up, well, we've got uh, our mechanic down there, but we also have some other guys that know mechanics too, so.
You said when you check the coolant level, and I mean, if it's, if it's full, if it's low, then it's obviously working, and then there's another issue that they're gonna have to address if it's actually low on coolant.
Right, I'll have, um.
Well, this guy's coming now.
Okay.
Again, scheduled come afternoon.
All right.
Just in future reference.
Okay. Yeah. We can.
Well, probably doesn't hurt for somebody to look at it everyone's.
No. So maybe some mechanical engine knowledge, I guess, so.
Okay.
I guess that's why they do the.
Yearly, we hit yearly.
Nearly, nearly run on it, and then somebody.
Conservation has.
Yeah, you know, as I said, that's, he'd be a good choice to.
It'd be a good choice to.
Pretty sharp on that, so.
Yeah, I think countywide, we have enough guys that are knowledgeable and.
Not necessarily to fix it, but just to.
Just do.
Yep, yep.
So.
Okay. Miles, are there any drainage?
Must not be.
I didn't see any.
Any claims?
Yeah.
Uh, is it claims? Oh, yes.
To approve the claims.
Oh, make a motion to approve the claims.
I'll second up, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all's prepared to say aye?
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carry. If I send a miss chair today, or just as a member, you have A J somewhere here?
Yeah, they all are here, so yeah, just go for it.
Uh, any reports?
Quick report.
Record. Sixty-one hundred seventy weeks. Take the motion to approve the court's report.
I'll make that a motion.
I'll second it, any further discussion? Hearing none, third say aye?
Aye.
Aye, both same sign, motion carry.
Hmm.
Uh, payroll, any payroll eligibility?
Yeah.
Right, so. So, since. New deputy?
New deputy.
New deputy. Brady, welcome.
Welcome.
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve the, uh, payroll eligibility.
I'll make that a motion.
I'll second up, any further discussion? Hearing all, clear to say aye?
Okay.
Both, both same sign, motion carry. Um, is there a deputy appointment today?
Yeah, just acknowledging that then. Brady again?
Yep, it's Brady again, so certificate of appointment by the deputy, I'll take a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'm second up, any further discussion? Hearing none, all's prepared to say aye?
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carry. Do I sign a miss?
Yeah. No, I'm stuck.
Okay, we have a liquor license for the stuff I can't get.
For a year this time.
For a year, well, they must be getting busy down there.
I'll make a motion to approve the liquor license.
All right, I'll second it. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all's prepared to say aye?
Aye.
Both same signs, motion carry.
Now, this is just one of those annual recommendations that I started doing, and I'll switch it as you're in.
Yeah.
Um, it's just seeing what the credits are gonna be and all that good stuff, and what the ag and family farm's gonna be, and it's just information more than anything.
Resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-five, setting for percentage of funding for property tax credits and exemption for assessment year twenty twenty-two. State of Iowa has appropriated funds for fiscal year July one, twenty twenty-four through July thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, which monies are sufficient to fund fully the various local property tax credits and exemptions, as where Iowa code section twenty-five B point seven requires local governments to extend the taxpayers, only those portions of property tax credits slash exemptions that are estimated by the Iowa Department of Revenue and Finance to be funded by the state appropriations. And whereas Iowa Department of Revenue and Finance has estimated the percentage of funding for the effective property tax credits slash exemption as follows, homestead credit one hundred percent, elderly and disabled credit one hundred percent, and whereas Iowa Department of Revenue and Finance has established pro-rated percentages of funding for the effective property tax credit as follows, ag land credit twenty-two point one nine four seven seven four five percent, and family farm credit of fifteen point six one four zero zero two two percent. And therefore be resolved pursuant to Iowa code section twenty-five B point seven, the property tax credit slash exemption in the North County for fiscal year July one, twenty twenty-four through July, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five shall be funded as follows, homestead credit one hundred percent, elder, elderly and disabled credit one hundred percent, ag land twenty-two point one nine four seven seven four five, farm, family farm credit fifteen point six one four zero zero two two, adopted this day of June twenty-four, tenth day of June twenty twenty-four, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
I will make a motion to approve that resolution.
And I will second it, I'll do a roll, any further discussion? Hearing none, I will do a roll call vote. More work.
Aye.
Maybe, aye, motion carry.
And I'll. No, I'll just fix it.
All right. No problem.
I don't want it slapping off.
All right, uh, so nine o'clock, could you be canvas? We have the resolution, gonna do that afterwards.
You know, you can, you can, um, approve, accept whatever this report, it's just gotta go through your meeting. We did have, um, post-election, I'll get everything checked out. We, um, it was, um, done on, um, our Kentset precinct, and it was hanging counted, and everything matched, so.
This is, we do this every election.
Every election, yeah, the Secretary of State, um, checks, picks the precinct, and, um, we, um, we had to, um, count the U S representative this time, so. You know, that's every time.
Do you need a motion to approve the election?
Report.
Yep.
I'll make that a motion. And I can second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carry. All right. Well, so. Do we have any, anything on buildings and grounds right now?
Um, just, I, I had an email from Levi, and he's working on the thing we're.
Boy, they're good, all right.
Otherwise, I'm waiting for an email to see if what the implications are, contract versus part-time person, to see if I can get that person who we inquired in or not.
Okay.
Or how, how to do it, so.
Perfect.
And I did, um, I, I checked with a reference too, so.
Okay.
And Sage, you got that board ordered?
Um, yeah, and then I just have, um, I have the the, the, well, it was a five year.
It was, we had two years left, and now it's a seven, I don't see anything to matter about.
Yeah.
We'll just do that.
So I just had that for A J's signed too, so for, if you'd like any anyone of you wanna sign it, that works too. So we can do that later, cause it's already approved.
Okay, yeah, perfect. You got that done?
Otherwise, I, like I said, we got a first application for I T, um.
Yeah, cause it is listed now, right?
Yeah, I got that done. Right, and it will be in the newspaper, I, I'd get a check with Joel and see how much further we should send it out, yeah.
Don't, don't they have like a statewide I T thing through this, what Joel's doing?
Yeah, so I gotta, and I know there's one on I S A.
Yeah, I S A actually had a deal on.
So, I gotta see how to get onto that stuff too.
Yeah, I don't know. Okay.
Yep.
I don't have anything on top of our water main, I guess they're working on it, I think, so.
Yeah, I I took a call ten days ago, but that's all I've heard since, so.
Yeah.
Then you, then you left the country.
Yeah.
That was the last call.
Is Melissa on there?
Uh, no.
Okay. Yeah, I think she's.
Well, I got one.
Yeah, I think.
Good invitation or something, or I have some conference or something she's going to.
Getting out, getting back out to the water.
Yep.
We got a bid from Central Tank Coding for forty-two thousand to blast and coat the interior of the Diamond Joe tank.
Yep.
Jason's working on that right now, right?
I think so.
Okay.
As I know, yes, it's kind of, geez, on that old show, so.
Yeah, because we could take that away from that A R P funds too.
Yes.
I'm tracking it.
Yep.
Got it.
Right, people service.
Yeah, and I might not have sent you that report.
I.
I didn't get it.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
You're here, so.
Morning.
Yeah.
Um, pretty much normal last month, uh, we had a couple pumps that needed to be replaced, or stop heads that needed to be replaced. Um, just trying to hit the high, to the high things, so the that air handling unit that was voted on, that's been installed, um, that was done May first by North Central Mechanical Services out of Mason City and Blazek Electric. So, so that's operational, that's good, um. The only other thing that I was hoping we were gonna do today is possibly mode on that telemetry for the lift station, A J, I guess I didn't, I wasn't aware that he was gonna be gone today, so he did come out, look at it, uh, we talked, talked about it. The day that we had that pre-con meeting for the new water main, and the lowest bid there was at twelve thousand one forty.
Yeah.
Through electric pump?
Yes.
It's. I think we ought to do it because it's a double backup, we need the hands on, but this would, this would be a double backup, because of the hands on.
Well, and it, it, it it will start that, uh, drum screen so that we don't have a, you know, there's, there's, there's no physical stuff that we can do that can prevent it from the overflow problems that we've had, so we have to have this part to talk to to keep that from happening again, I guess.
Okay, yeah, it's a radio system.
Yeah, yeah.
It's, and we're gonna have some A R P funds left over, I don't see why we can't use it, upgrade the stuff that we need to get done, so it doesn't hit us later with expenses.
Yep. Nobody's letting fall parts.
Yeah.
I'll take a motion on that too.
I will make a motion to do that lift station with electric pump for twelve thousand one hundred forty dollars, I think it was.
Yeah, it's been, yeah, it's fun, sounds good.
I will second that, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all's prepared to say aye?
Aye.
Aye, both same sign, motion carry.
Right.
Did you do the gearbox?
I have, I've been looking to see if I can get a second quote, and I haven't, so far I haven't come up with a second one yet, but I'm still working.
But there. Is it gonna be tough to get that, or is there just nobody out there to do this kind of stuff?
The, the, um, I grow a blank now, um, the mill right service that we use, um, they said that they can get it. That's the quote that we do have.
Ninety-three.
Yeah, ninety-three, something. Um, but I know you guys wanted to see a second quote, I just, we haven't, I haven't been able to find anybody to get us.
Yeah, find a second quote, cause I think we ought to get that done too.
Yeah, we can, yeah, you know, if you can get a second quote, we should have one.
I'll keep working on that, otherwise, uh, as far as we are aware, the, the water main project is going better than scheduled, better than they thought, so I know we've, we've been lucky as far as.
Good weather.
Weather, yeah, so, uh, everything.
They are digging up there.
Yep, yeah.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Yep. Yeah, they've been.
I've seen them drive across the intersection a couple times while I've been going back home.
And we're watching for dogs and cats, so.
Good.
Keep an eye on. That's all I got for today.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Uh, yeah, thank you.
Department heads, anything?
I can bring up one other thing that I forgot about, we've got, uh, the cat dump truck that Lynn we bought.
Yep.
Um, it's kind of been plagued, you know, that cat truck is a morphidited international cat conglomeration, well, the transmission in that thing is a, is a cat transmission. Uh, and the last, it wasn't shifting right, so we had some oil samples done, and there's filings in the transmission. Um, I think we were kind of quoted at forty thousand dollars to rebuild. Or we thought about putting an Allison transmission in it.
What's in your mouth?
A cat.
Cat.
Cat automatic?
I believe it's a it, yeah, it's an automatic, you know, we actually thought about, well, if we we actually, one other option was to put a manual in there, but the way the controls are set up for salt and sand, it's right where your, right where your shifter would be, so I think we're trying to get a quote now to see what it would actually cost, and we kind of thought that until we know for sure, because, you know, the electronics for the automatics, maybe they, the telemetry reads the same to the transmission, but we were kind of quoted that it, it was indicated to us that it could be even cheaper to put an Allison back in it.
You're not sure an Allison will work.
We know that you could buy the truck with an Allison or a cat.
But it may not.
They're gonna work, but get computer.
The computer.
Right, so.
Read the same.
Well, but they would be able to, whether through harnesses or programming, get it to work, but we don't know the cost is yet, but it's gonna be expensive. And the truck is a decent truck, it's been plagued with electrical problems. Um, engine component wise, it's been a good truck, it's just that there's been, you know, they don't make them anymore, but I don't know that replacing it is something we can afford to do, right, I mean, they haven't spent forty thousand dollars on a transmission, where can you put that money otherwise, but it's eighteen months to get a truck.
I'm sure a new truck is.
Eight, they're not, you're pushing upper two hundred thousand, so you're a, a quick truck.
So I'd rather put the transmission.
So we're, we're getting our quotes together to find out what's the best thing, and if we can get something quick, they might be able to get it in before winter, so. Just kind of give you guys a heads up on that.
Perfect, I forgot to mention it before, yep.
Yeah.
Anybody else on department heads? Okay, um, I had nothing supervisor weekly, and I doubt you did, and A J's gone, so.
Yeah, that pretty much eliminates that.
Not saying you weren't doing your work.
So, okay, um, any next weekend items we gotta talk about here? Nothing I can think of right now.
It is nine, so.
I got eight fifty-seven.
Oh, okay.
Smart, those.
I'm looking at the.
Close enough.
So.
See, I'll leave, we got that, in fact, we, uh, we don't need a recess due. We just do the last thing.
Shouldn't just, either as, or it's been run through.
Oh, we get a sign.
So, yeah, get your, get your hands stretched out, okay, so basically, we went through, and these reports should be able to match that somewhat, um. So, for U S State Representative District Two, um. I think that's not a board. So, we, um, received, or Ashley Henson received seven hundred and eighty-four votes.
Wait a second.
Yeah, you'll have to flip, sorry.
I just.
Just put, when you see the first Republican, just put those all on the top. Yes. We just had to, sorry about that.
Long as you're fixing it. I don't like to dig. There we go. That would.
Like they change it every year. So, there's seven hundred and years old, like the same as you're naming this. Um, seven hundred and eighty-four votes for Ashley Henson, nine scattering, and for a total of seven hundred and ninety-three votes. Senate Senator District Thirty Representative, um, Waylon Brown, five hundred and seventy-one, Doug Campbell, three hundred and four. There were zero scattering, and then a total of eight hundred and seventy-five votes. Jane Bloomingdale, Jane E. Bloomingdale, received five hundred and eighty-two votes. John Rosen, Revlonfeld, two ninety-two, zero scattering, for eight hundred and seventy-four. U S Representative District Two, Democrat. Well, oh, oops, we gotta do those, okay. Okay, so, um, that one will be Marx maybe is one seventy-seven. Richard Scholrock is one sixty-three, write-ins two, um, for a total of, are these gonna be the same, is it three fifty-five?
Three forty-two.
Okay, three forty-two, yep, that's right. So, you go to the next, um, um, auditor for Republican, um, I received seven hundred and fourteen, there were seventy-one write-ins, so it will be.
Seven eighty-five.
Yes, thank you. Um, Jesse Luther for sheriff, um, seven ninety-six, Chad Wirtzel, sixty-six, and your number is?
Eight sixty-four, and there's two scatterings.
Yep, oh yeah, sorry, two scattering, yep. Okay, now I can go back to this, um. I just did, I didn't have a full, because the Secretary of State only needs the state and federal ones, so this one, I gave you the full report. Okay, um, so Sarah Corfrey, ninety-three votes, scattering three, for a total of ninety-six. Richard Lawrence for State Senator District Thirty, eighty-seven votes, six votes scattering, and ninety-three twenty. Um, State Representative District Sixty, twenty votes scattering. United States Represent, oh wait, we gotta go to county again then.
Yep.
Okay, so there were eight write-ins for Democrat, for Supervisor, so there's eight. Right?
Yeah, scattering eight, total votes eight.
Yep. Okay, so for county auditor, we have a total of thirty write-ins, so thirty.
Yep.
Um, for county sheriff, we have twenty-six write-ins, so we got a twenty-six. And back now to libertarians. Um, United States Representative District Two, there were four votes scattering, and Ashley got four votes, so there were eight.
Yep.
Um, let's see, Senator, State Senator District Thirty scattering five, Waylon Brown three, for a total of eight.
Yep.
Um, State Representative District Thirty scattering two, Jane Bloomingdale five, for a total of seven. Um, for supervisors, there was one write-in. County auditor, there were three write-ins. And for sheriff, there were two write-ins.
Yeah, we're just, well, it's three, you got three, and there's a total of six.
Okay, three and three, so it was, three were mine, and three were scattering.
Total of six there.
Yep. Thank you.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep, we're good. Okay, so that's, that's it. And we'll just sign everything after.
Okay.
But I have a resolution. I'll, I'll fix that too.
Resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-six, certificate of canvas for primary elections all. Whereas the primary election was held as prescribed by law, June four, twenty twenty-four, and whereas Board Supervisors and Ex officio Board Ambassadors. As Canvas, the board, have set election accordance with forty-three point four nine fifty twenty-four, the code of Iowa, and now therefore. Being resolved that we, the undersigned members of Board Supervisors and Ex officio Board of Canvas of Worth County, Iowa, do hereby certify the following turnout report. And results in the primary election held June twenty, June four, twenty twenty-four, and there no obvious clerical errors. Were identified during the canvas, nine hundred and six. People voted at the polls on Election Day, one hundred and four absentee ballots were accepted for counting. Zero provisional ballots were accepted for counting, including included in absentee totals. A total of one thousand and ten people voted. Candidates nominated for county office, Board of Supervisors, Mark Shavy, Republican, County Auditor, Jackie A. Bakehouse, Republican. Jackie A. Bakehouse Libertarian, County Sheriff, Jesse Luther, Republican, Jesse Luther Libertarian. County Office about a party nominee, Democratic Party Board of Supervisors, County Auditor, County Sheriff. Libertarian Party Board of Supervisors, Republican Party, approved this tenth day of June twenty twenty-four, Worth County. Board of Supervisors, I will take a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
And I will second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call about Lowberg. Smaby, aye, emotional carry.
Now I just gotta sign, but you can do that after.
So we got that done, pretty well covered everything.
I think so.
I guess we'll take a motion to have them not get done.
No, just, is there anything we need to add to the agendas coming up?
I didn't.
Can't think of anything right now.
So. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I will second it, any further discussion, hearing none, all's prepared to say aye. Both same side, emotional carry.